Okay, at this time, if everyone will please stand for identification and I'll put a flag. Fisher Owens is going to lead us to sign in on identification.
Let's go. Father God, as we enter this season of Thanksgiving, we are blessed and Lord has plenty to be thankful for. Lord, we thank you for your presence here tonight. We just thank you for our county. We thank you for your direction and your discernment. Lord, we just pray that whatever we do, say, and even think about tonight, Lord, bring glory to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Gates County Commissioners on November 20, 2017, at seven o'clock. This being our second meeting of the month, there is no minutes to approve. We do vote ahead on our first meeting Monday night. I mean Monday during the day. In front of you is our agenda. The only change in the agenda is ten at closed session on strike through legal, economic, development, and real estate, but we do have closed session for personnel. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted.
So move. Say it.
Motion's been made, property second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, delegations. Okay, no unites delegations. We do have a nice delegation. Mrs. Webb, for you, curfew. Nice to see you tonight.
Thank you all for letting me come for you, and I hope everybody is doing well, and I hope everybody has a nice Thanksgiving.
If you're state of name with the record and your, where you live.
My name is Laura Webb. I live at three O two Fourth Street. Way over to the play, anyway. And I was nominated by several people in the community to ask, I was asked to come over to Board of Commissioners to speak to them about a problem that we're having and how they could help us remedy it. Basically, I am here to ask you to give us, or to give serious consideration and thought to establishing a curfew for the youth of Gates County. In the immediate area, for within less than six months, we have had seven serious incidents, of which personally I was involved in one. Was very pleasant. I cannot talk about them because they're some still under investigation, and therefore I do not feel at liberty to say anything about what they were and what has happened. But if you come into the area of Gatesville and the surrounding areas, let's see, north of me on 37, and south of me on 37, almost at any time of night, and on Highway 137 coming from your end to Gatesville, it's not uncommon to see youth almost at any time of the night walking the roads and walking the streets. When they are approached by a vehicle, you know that they're up to no good because they are willing to hide. Most of them that I have seen, and the two that I was personally involved with, and I do not know who they are, were dressed in dark blue or black hoodies, did not have the hood on, they had the long sleeves, and dark blue jeans or trousers. And as I said, they are appearing at unusual hours of the PM and most unusual hours of the AM, when children and adults, I won't say children, but adults should be at home, in bed, asleep, or either getting up, preparing to go to work. My incident occurred, my first indication that I had problems at my home was between five and 5:30. And what awakened me was the conversation outside my bedroom window. I have, as all of you know, I have a tiny dog. My tiny dog was at the foot of my bed, and the noise that stunned me to awaken me caused him to awaken, and he began to bark. So that's how close it was to now. I realize that this will not be something that will be easy to accomplish. It's going to be difficult, but I have a lot of trust in the people sitting before me, and I have an awful lot of trust in our county attorney. And I see, I personally feel that there is no one better to consult, to get the recommendations of what to do than our county attorney. And I'm quite sure that most of you have heard of the incidents that are occurring. And it's not pleasant, and each night when I go to bed, and my thing about it is, my yard is well lit. I have a big Dominion Energy Light that I pay a fee on each month, and that did not stop them. And they were in a well-lit area, and as I said, they were, I would say, and it's on the police report, estimated about four feet from my bedroom window. That's how close they were. They were close enough that I could quote the conversation that they were having, and the bad part about it was, they were talking about, they should have done something when they were by there on Friday night, and they didn't, and they missed their chance. And this was on the following Monday morning. So any consideration or any help that you can give us, I would greatly appreciate it. And the first thing everybody wants to say, it goes back to parental care. I'll be the first one to admit that. But the only way whether we can find out if it's good parental care, or if it's bad parental care, or if it's indifference, is for something, a law to be passed that will give the law enforcement officers the opportunity to stop these people when they see them walking down the highway, or walking the streets of Gatesville at four o'clock in the morning, and saying, hey, you're not supposed to be out here. Come on, get in my car with me, and let's go for a little ride. Let them bring them to the sheriff's office, or let them take them home. And that way, we can find out whether it's the lack of, or whether it is not in it, or whether it's the teenagers that are slipping out of the house. And right now, the law enforcement officers' hands are tied because I have been told by the investigating officer who was at my house, there is no such ordinance in Gates County. So any help that you all seem fit to give the community, I would greatly appreciate it. I know the people of Gatesville would, and I think I can speak for a big majority of the citizens of Gates County. And I thank you for the opportunity to have had to present this to you.
Well, Ms. Webb, this is the first I've heard of. I'm not sure all members of the board.
I have heard about it, and Ms. Webb gave me an opportunity to come to her house and sit down and talk with her about that, and was aware. I feel a miss if I not talk with each one of the fellow commissioners. I had a feeling that maybe everyone was aware of some of the things going on. So I appreciate you bringing that to us, and I'll have an opportunity to speak to my colleagues about that.
I was, I was aware of some of it, and as well as, I'm not out there to let you beat it, but I have seen some activity.
Yeah, well, I don't go and come an awful lot at night, but about a month ago, I had the opportunity to meet my family in Edington, to eat supper with them. And of course, we closed Pizza Hut down from there, because several of us had come from different directions. Eleven o'clock, I was coming back on 137. I had just turned 32 onto 137. And there were four of them I saw in my headlights ahead of me. And as I approached them, got closer to them, they ran over, down from the ditch, and hid in the woods. And I can take you to the various spots where they were. So it's not like here in the village of Gatesville that it's happening. It's out in the community. Again, thanks, and if there's anything which I, at my age, I can't even think some town out my name is, but if there's anything I can help with, I'll be glad to do so.
I would appreciate you bringing it to us, and certainly we can talk to our county to see if any options are available into the law enforcement.
I think we also need to talk with the Gatesville Town Council, to see if they have separate ordinances.
Gatesville does not have one, no. The only thing that they have right now that has created a problem for us, and we want to approach town council about that, probably changing the hours or something, is the play street, designated play street on High Street. Jack, you look around here all the time, and you know it's a designated play street. And at four or five o'clock in the evening, especially now, when it gets darker in the hour, youngsters out there throwing rocks at the lights to try and hit the lights, to break the walls and so forth, and you speak to them, and they turn around and they say, this is the play street. And they're right, it is the play street. So we're going to speak to the town council to probably have restrictive hours on it. And I'm sure that we'll have to, if we go to the root of a curfew, we'll have to have one for daylight saving time, we'll have to have one for Eastern Standard Time. And when we say a curfew, personally speaking from my heart, I don't know what the children feel like they have to be a prisoner in their home. Let them play with their next door neighbors. Let them get out there and play a game of tag. There's nothing wrong with teenagers getting out in the yard and pooping and hollering around their own house, having a good time, but they are off the street. But I think that every person in this room should agree with me, that two, three, four, five o'clock in the morning is no place for adults to be, let alone the youngsters.
Okay, thank you so much. Certainly, we'll attention is what we can do, what our options are.
We will appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Of course, this being the second meeting, there are no administrative reports. I will call your attention, but there is a letter from MAPS up here, that's FYI, for me to read. Okay, at this time, we've got public hearings. I'll entertain a motion to go into a public hearing concerning the Animal Control Ordinance Amendments.
So move. Say it.
Motion's been made, property second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, at this time, we will ask the people who have signed up to speak, to come forward. We ask you to give out your name and your place of residence, as well as try to limit your comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Okay, Carol Witt.
Good evening. Here is Witt, 29 Hiker Street. I've got less than five minutes in our briefs at this time, so I don't want to. I have stood before you so many times, believing for the innocent dogs in our county, that I have lost count. One thing I haven't lost count of is the suffering. In July, an innocent dog chained to a plastic doghouse, three walls, a roof, and a floor, according to our ordinances, suffered and died of horrific death alone, while the owner sat inside a near-conditioned trailer, and calls to animal control went unanswered. This dog is one of many, you just haven't heard about the others. Our county is full of outdoor and chained up dogs living horrible lives. Two hundred and twenty-two people, a drop in the bucket of the count of voting residents in our county, signed a petition for change. These people and many more understand the need for changes in our animal welfare ordinances and the need for humane treatment in our county in reference to outdoor dogs. My question to each of you is why do not understand? Why do you protect the inhumane, neglectful, and the cruel? I sat in the work session and was totally disgusted. Three walls, a roof, waterproof or not, and a floor allowed the round tree-laying dog to suffer and die. And he's one of many. What the dog needed was shade, water, and most importantly, a humane, responsible owner, and immediate response from animal control. All dogs need this. Our county ordinances should not allow loopholes, cruelty, neglect, and abuse, and protect these type of owners, but it does. It was apparent the round tree-laying dog needed shelter, other than a plastic house. That's why plywood was nailed to the top of the doghouses after the owners received such negative attention on social media and the news. If you, as our county commissioners, cannot see a need for change in any of the requests made in the petition, I question your compassion or understanding for the suffering. Surely you understand suffering. Surely you do. Out of all of the petition requests, I am asking, along with the two hundred and twenty-two residents, that you rethink the shelter requirement for dogs, and chaining, and tethering. Counties, cities, and states all around us are making these changes. Winston-Salem just last week put a ban on chaining and tethering. Ahoski right now, the councils in Ahoski have brought it to the table, and are discussing it right now, to ban the chaining. We live in a beautiful county, but the ugliness and suffering of outdoor and chained dogs in yards quickly show us, and anyone that visits, that we are inhumane, with blood on our hands. We have a lot of work to do, and it starts right here, right now, with you five commissioners, the sheriff's department, and animal control division. Thank you.
Thank you. G. Gary Ewan.
Good evening. My name is James Gary, and I go by Gary. I reside at 127 Desert Road, Corby. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I'm here this evening to address the substandard ordinance of a disregard of well-being and dependent animals in our county. These issues and numerous examples have been brought to your attention, therefore I find no need to revisit these traps being managed. As mentioned last time I spoke, there are state and federal ordinances that can supplement our inequity. They just need to be enforced. Mr. Jordan, in your response to the petition presented by Ms. Witt and other concerned animal rights citizens dated August 2nd, 2017, on August 7th, you responded with this, quote, "Gates County's current animal control ordinance should not be considered the reason for county pets slash domestic animals not receiving the proper care and attention by their owners or designees, resulting in distress and death. The reason being, the perceived ineffective requirements in our animal control ordinance by concerned citizens is a matter of pet owners not being aware of the lawful requirements in our ordinance to take proper care of their pets, or they frequently disregard the lawful requirement in our ordinance until they are cited for violation. In many instances, good Samaritan animal rights and protection groups would do well to try to establish relationships with the animal owners in Gates County, and try to educate them in ways to better care for their pets that is considered more humane, compassionate, and in accordance with our current animal control ordinance. Billboards have been placed in Gates County by animal rights groups such as PETA advocating proper care of pets. It would help if the billboards also referred to Gates County animal control ordinance as being a lawful requirement to do so." Unquote. Mr. Jordan, ignorance of the law is no excuse. Humanity and common decency is instilled upon us by God. Humane treatment of farm and domestic animals should be obvious. Sir, you made numerous references in your continued response, but the sheriff's department has the ability and the responsibility to determine what is suitable, appropriate, and sufficient in a case-by-case instance. Sir, I certainly agree with you, and continue to wonder why that authority and responsibility is of yours. Judgment and discretion are a great tool, but not when life is at stake, whether animal or human. Tonight, I offer the citizens of Gates County the opportunity to make a difference, by announcing my candidacy to run for sheriff in the 2018 election. Thank you for your time. Oh, by the way, my moral and responsibility as a judgment, to enforce the laws and give animals a chance to live a human life, will be my first priority.
Cam Owens.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm very good at speaking publicly. I've never liked it.
Just waiting here in your living room, speaking to your neighbor.
Probably not, but my name is Kimberly Owens, and I live in York. I also have a grooming facility, all grooming business, grooming like Kimberly. Have a lot of contact with people in the county, outside of the county, outside of the state. I just want to say that I find that it really should be common sense. I don't really know why we have to go back and forth like a tennis match to try to convince you guys. We shouldn't have to. First of all, you guys work for us, okay? We put you where you're at. You are supposed to listen to us. We are what you are fighting for. It shouldn't be that we have to beg you to have common sense, okay? I find that everybody passes the buck. Nobody wants to take responsibility. Everybody seems to think that how these animals are treated are fine, but my question is, how many of you guys would put one of your dogs in the situation that dog was in? I bet none of you. Any of you that sit there and think a chain is okay around an animal's neck, whether it be a human neck or an animal neck? Mrs. Webb spoke. It was her dog that alerted Mrs. Webb. I also have her as a client, so I'm fully aware of when, no, it was her dog that saved her. The same species that are thrown out in mud and chains, and nobody wants to, we as a county cannot get our sheriff's department to respond to animal calls. I have called the animal control, and I don't let up. I keep calling every hour because of the track record, okay? We should not have to beg you guys. We shouldn't. It's common sense, you know? Again, you know, why should we have to justify chaining a dog, or keeping them out without shelter? And as commissioners, and as this county, we should have been outraged that the sheriff, Randy Hathaway, did not do anything about it, okay? But sit there and sugarcoat it and do what he wants to do, okay? He, by the way, I'm gonna tell you, he's a piece of work. I'm just leaving it at that, okay? But I have been raised in this city. I have lived in a lot of counties, and I'm here to tell you, from here to the beach, my brother lives to the beach, and I'm not saying this to be ugly, I'm really not. I'm being honest with you, and anybody that knows me will tell you I have no filter. I say what I'm thinking. This county is a joke to a lot of outsiders, okay? It's the old money, good old boy, let's just pat everybody on the butt and be happy, okay? I'm gonna be leaving this county as soon as I can sell my house. I've had a lot of clients move out of this county in the last five years because of the way it's where I am. Lack of opportunity, lack of jobs, lack of leadership, lack of law enforcement. This is a fact. I've heard it. I am a business owner, okay? I've heard, I've heard hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, literally, of people telling us, okay? I proudly say, I do a lot of grooming, I have a lot of clients that are in this county that come all the way from Virginia Beach to see me. I've been very blessed. Obviously, these people have lived in the county, or they wouldn't know about me. But the great census that I have seen was, you can do whatever you want to, and it's fine. And it shouldn't be that way. And I just hope that you guys take into consideration that we're not asking you to do anything that the other counties are not doing. You know, I guess, and I'm not trying to combine the two, I don't find it offensive, but I do know some people would. My question of this would be, do you think the good Lord, can you go to bed at night and say that, you know what, I've done all I can to these animals? And we should say that, I say that myself. Every day I pray to be voted person, but when I go to bed at night, I know I've tried to be the voter person. Even if these laws don't pass, if all of you voted for it, it would pass. We all know that. So if it doesn't pass, somebody has a problem with the animals. Other than that, I wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas, and a happy new year.
Well, thank you. Denise Miller.
Denise Miller, I live in York, 365 San Banks Road. I don't have a piece of paper, and I don't have a prepared speech. I guess I was kind of thinking that we would hear about the animal ordinances before we commented. That's why I signed my name to comment on what I heard about the ordinances. But I do want to say that of all the people who have spoke tonight, I'm proud of them, and I hope you don't take the apathy of so many of our Gates County citizens not coming tonight. I have to admit, I'm very surprised because throughout the community...
I have to admit, I'm very surprised because throughout the community, I have heard so many people say that they are going to be here tonight. So please don't, don't take the apathy of those people into consideration because there are people who care, they're here tonight, and there are people who care that maybe couldn't make it here tonight. And there's a lot of animals out there that are hoping that you, all of you, care enough to do something to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that's for the floor that has signed up. Is there anyone else who'd like the opportunity to sit?
I'd like to, ma'am.
Okay, and you approach the podium and give us your name and address and...
My name is Steve Long. I live at 127 El Nube in York. I am a dog owner. I have five biddos sitting in my pens right now. Uh, my pen is twenty-one, about fifty-one slather cement. Um, so they got a lot of room to play. I got eight barrels in my pens. Make sure that they're covered. I told, asked my wife to go get me some cedar shavings today. She bought back hay. I don't like hay for my dog pens. I like cedar shavings 'cause I can keep them clean on. And I love my animals, but what I saw on the, uh, Facebook and everything, a bit of this animal, that man should have been put in jail. And it's our Sheriff's Department fault that they did not put him in jail. Our animal control man, I've had him on his situation I was in. I hit a cow at four-thirty in the morning. It did twelve thousand dollars worth of damage to my truck. I come out here to, to talk to the Sheriff's Department, to talk to this man, to get him to go find this cow because I knew it was hurt. I mean, I had him probably running fifty, fifty-five miles an hour, four-thirty in the morning, going to meet my wife and go to Newport News. Well, the next day I called him again to find out what was going on. I talked to him on the phone that day, it happened. Told him what the situation was, told him where it was at. He's had several complaints in two years from this man about his cows being out destroying people's property, but he had never done nothing to him. He never will have any citation for nothing and, but I could have gotten killed. Two weeks later, almost hit another cow. Because our Sheriff's Department had not done nothing. And that's a large problem that they, that they, which yeah. The lady with the incident, the folk stepped over here first. That's our Sheriff's Department. They gained going and chasing these kids down. They're running from the law, they're doing something wrong. I mean, and I, when I was young, I was very late at night sometimes, but we weren't running up and down the streets. I mean, we were staying around home and stuff like that, but, uh, we weren't doing that kind of stuff, but, uh, when I called that animal control agent about that, that cow, the next day he asked me, had I been to talk to the man? I said, it's not my job to go talk to the man, it's your job. And that's a large problem, Gates County's problem right now is our Sheriff's Department. And if I could, I would fire that man that day because he was not doing his job. If I go to work in the morning, my boss man tells me to do something and I don't do it, he has to like fire me. He has to like fire me because I'm not doing my job and that's what needs to be done by this Sheriff's Department right now.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else? Have I seen anyone coming toward the podium? Do I have a motion to go either public hearing?
Some who sat.
Motion's been made, probably second. All those are papers, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, it is time to come to the discussion about the animal control. Does anyone look like they can?
Um, I want to make a remark related to what Ms. Witt said. Put down shade, water, and petting. Those are three hot points on the Roundtree Lane incident. So why don't we, um, why don't we go in the ordinance to those, those areas? Is that okay?
And that's 201.15, it's about a shelter.
201.
The definition.
201.5.
201.15.
201.5, thank you. And that is an area in our copy for the, for the citizens. We have yellow on our ordinance showing that there's a change that's going to be made or, or something that we can talk about in that area. Actually, it means that there has been a change in wording, definition, or something like that, so. And this is the definition area?
Correct.
So may I read that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so section 201.15, heading there, it's proper shelter. And so this is the definition under proper shelter. Constant access to sufficient shelter, three walls, a roof, and a floor that sits above the ground. In yellow, a floor that sits above the ground is an addition to this definition. And protects from the weather, i.e. rain, wind, snow, hail, sleet, and/or sun. And then again in yellow, this would be an addition. Barns and farm shelters are excluded from being required to have a floor that sits above the ground. So I just, I read that as a, as a way to get it started. I was quite surprised when Jill was here and showed us a picture of the shelters that they give away. I thought they would actually been a little more requirement, you know, than they are what we call the authority, the experts, only because they deal with it on a day-to-day basis, on a day-to-day basis. I noted in the picture that it was a slanted shelter with some overhang on it. And Carol, can you help me, was it three-sided?
It's, it's just a doghouse.
A, a doghouse with a, I think they have a plastic thing for a door.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, plastic.
And it's just a, a little bit of a revamped doghouse because you've got to remember the folks that they are giving these doghouses to, their dogs have nothing.
Right, okay.
So they're lucky to even get, get that and it's, you know...
And they're trying to keep their defenses down.
Yes, yes.
And the roof has to be waterproof, yes.
Let's go ahead.
And they have the plastic so that the wind and rain will not go inside the dog like with, but the dog can get in and out of like any problem.
Do you, um...
And in addition to, excuse me for interrupting, Commissioner Owens, but in addition to, is it not asphalt or something outside, foretend or...
There is, okay. So for the definition of shelter, um...
Well, I guess it, this is four-sided. It's not, it's not open, a three-sided it would be open completely.
Well, the doorway would be open without having the little, um, plastic flaps there.
So if, um, if the public are willing and it's, it's okay, we're not in a public hearing now, so we can talk a little bit, sort of inform. Mr. Long, you might know the very word. Let's talk about your barrels.
Yes, sir.
Your barrels are off the...
Like that, I have a, a full buckle that I have a half moon cut out to hold the barrels in. And then, um, I have plywood on top of my barrel which I'm getting ready to replace because it's, it's been on for about eight years now and, you know, a dog will chew and then, I have to say they start to get in bad shape, I'm getting ready to replace them. The tops on my barrels also, but, um, you know, I keep my dog baited down good, the cedar shavings, I, I like cedar, cedar shavings because it's clean for the dog and hay causes mites, which kill the tay and all that on the dogs and I just try to keep them as set free, which, you know, so, but I got nice place for my dogs.
But you said you have an overhang, right? Over the top of the...
Yes. Um, during the winter time it's open. Um, during the summertime I put shade cloth on top of my pens.
So that, that's our number one problem, I think.
But they have, they have the constant shade.
Yes, I make sure they have shade cloth, but during the winter time I leave it open. I open it up because of the snow getting on my shade cloth and the leaves and causes a lot of problems. I've had, like, the water sink into my pens and I was cutting stuff down, you know, with heavy snow on top of it.
But did you say you had plywood on, on top of your barrels?
Yes, ma'am. It, it sticks a little, the, the overhang of the barrel itself.
So the sun will not shine, yeah?
Exactly, like even today is, you know, if the dog wants to go into the barrel, they, they will get the sun, but today even they sit in the sun.
So it is, it is clear that there are, there is more than one way to handle your animal.
Yes, definitely.
And, and make it safe one. I do want the, the public to understand our deliberations back and forth. One of the things that we try to do is to give, you know, the Sheriff's Department and the Animal Control Officer that gets the call and, you know, we, we don't, we might get a call, but we don't have the badge and the authority to go out there and enforce anything. So what, what we're trying to do also is to give Sheriff's Department and Animal Control Officer all the identities, that man, the ability to make some judgment, some judgment calls, because if you, you know, there's a one little thing that prevents him from going on that property, we don't, we want to try and eliminate that. And I think in some of our verbiage that, that's in there, it will say to the Animal Control Officer's discretion, which gives him the ability and the authority to say, I'm making a judgment call here, um, so I'm going on that property to check on the animal. So keep that, keep that in mind.
Oh, yes. That's, that's his job and his right and he should have that right too, to check on animals, but by, we shouldn't be uphill at the Sheriff's Department and doing their job because if anybody that cannot see what I saw on, on Facebook, that there was animal cruelty, they could have wore my glasses.
It was, uh, let us, let us move on.
Excuse me, I also say, I also called Mr. Hathaway about the dog. He hung up on me. Now that's, that's a very responsible public figure, you know, he hung up on me.
Let's focus on the...
Yeah, let us focus on this and, and a comment like that would be something, when we finish, we would want you back up there, okay? With respect to that. So I'll just say, so we can move on to, to other areas, Miss Hopp, if I may.
Another thing I can see a concern about this is that it says three-sided walls and I was assuming that four-sided would be the door and, uh, I don't know if we need to put, because some people might think it's a, just a U with nothing in front. I'm not sure that we don't need to say four...
Four-sided would be...
Four, four-sided with a door opening.
And would access.
Well, I think it says, it says, it protects from the weather, rain, wind, snow, hail, sleet.
Yeah, but it says three walls.
Yeah, but if you've got three walls and obviously it's open to the point where the rain and snow can come into there, it's not, it's, it's not sufficient. Yeah, so it's, it's a judgment, the sheriff has the latitude to go in there and say, hey, if they get a call and say, yeah, you've got three walls, but look, there's nothing covering this opening here and it's not sufficient and they're within the ordinance. And, and I, I stick to the point that, you know, if, if the ordinance is divorced, then we'll have protection by animals. You can't specify in this ordinance, uh, every detail that would make it... Inspective discretion. Yeah, that someone who, a dog would not, or an animal would not have any chance of, of, of being, uh, taken care of.
Okay, so you're claiming that from the weather, yes?
Just, uh, one thing, as Mr. Jordan just said, you can't, you can't touch everything, no matter what. Carol, you, are you familiar with Steve's setup?
No, but I mean, I'm seeing setups like it.
All right, would you consider that sufficient?
Um, yes, and, and actually that's what I'm pushing for is these folks, because we're not talking about responsible dog owners. We're not talking about Steve. We're talking about the irresponsible dog owners out here in this county that have a doghouse sitting out in the middle of the yard. Their dog is chained to that doghouse and they have nothing else.
I, I know, I know what you're talking about, that what you, and of course, we can't distinguish between responsible and irresponsible dog owners. We're not, we don't have that authority either, but the way this is written right now, Steve, if the sheriff went up Steve's side, he'd pick all the dogs. None of his barrels have three walls.
No, he can't have my dog's shelter.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. He's talking about my definition. My definition, we said we just gotta have three walls. Your barrel does not have three walls.
Excuse me?
Your barrel does not have three walls. It's got one continuous one.
But it's Ryan, I mean...
It's got two walls.
I mean, if y'all want to go back and look at it, I don't want to have a hand...
No, Steve, you misunderstand me. I'm just, I'm saying we, we need to revisit this and make it a little bit more specific so that what you have there is legal.
Yeah, okay.
But because this, like, if he, if a deputy were not there to enforce this word for word, yours would not be legal because it does not have three sides. And that we deem it to be adequate and, and other people may deem it to be adequate. So we have to write this, so the addresses, scenarios like yours and scenarios like this. We, we just, we need to revisit that definition.
And these are the things that, that by the ordinance can go to court. And if it says three walls and it's not a wall, then it's not sufficient enough or whatever that's where the judge is gonna look at.
But in the definition, you probably need to put the, the dog houses commercially built or homemade, commercially built barrels, um, because we are in a rural county, so we know a lot of our dogs are in barrels as opposed to your standard doghouse. Um, and the crate carrier stuff needs to put in there, but that's unknown. We've got people in this county, you can write down Willington Road, that have carriers that you would crate your dogs in the house or you'd go on an airplane with. They are in their yard as a doghouse and they offer no protection whatsoever.
That classic that the dog, they...
They have, they have a little door on it and everything. I mean, they're not meant to be sheltered.
For example, Steve, in your situation, Billy brings up a good point, Commissioner
Phelps thinks of a good point. If we were to use a square footage in our new definition, we need to know that your barrel is, is five feet tall and it's twenty-four inches wide, you see what I'm saying? But those are the kind of things that we need to factor in after the summer. We've got to handle that there. That's Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor, pass it.
Who is it?
Mr. Taylor.
What's it?
Ms. Witt addressed it with the animal carrier. That was my concern because that definitely is not protected from rain, sun. It has ventilation holes all along the side. It, it's nothing, no protection whatsoever from cold rain.
Miss Hopp?
Yes.
And I asked Anna the same question. If we don't come up with a definition after hearing from the public, after hearing, or if we feel like the definition is not properly worded and needs to have something added to it, um, we've had our hearing, but if we want to change this after this hearing, will we have to have another hearing?
I'll have to check on this one. I think we, we don't, but I'll have to double check.
I think we'll cover for what we change and vote on tonight.
Right, if we change and vote on it tonight, we'll cover. If it, we go back to studying or reword.
So the ordinance, if you ask, Mr. Britton, if you don't mind, the information that was sent to the commissioners regarding proper shelter, did you all address, uh, 215.5, I didn't, we were just talking about?
Well, you'll have to tell me what 215.5.
The definition.
Uh, that Commissioner Owens just read it where it says, constant access to sufficient shelter. Now that's, to me, the sheriff's department, constant access to sufficient shelter, they can make a judgment decision right on the spot.
With, with that wording, so that would be either a commercially made doghouse or a barrel.
And, and then we go further, we say, three walls. And, and, you know, that would be a minimum, uh, a roof and a floor that sits above ground and protects from the weather. And it goes on which rain, snow, hail, sleet, or sun. Now, did you all provide any wordings, uh, to address that in the items that were sent to the commissioners?
In the petition you're talking about, cause I don't have that in front of me either. But, um, the petition, I think you have the, um, the three walls, the roof, the floor. Um, above ground, I think you could put the metal stuff in there with the concrete. I don't have it in front of me tonight.
I think I might either, but I, I remember.
One of the main things we all miss in height, we're talking about shelter, but we can't put in proper food and water on them.
But that's down here in all definitions. Uh, but we probably do need to put in a statement that animal carriers are not accepted as proper shelter. But we could add that tonight.
Yeah, we, we can.
Where is it, what's that?
Animal carriers.
Animal carriers are not deemed to be acceptable for shelter.
No show wire. And is there another name they refer to as, is there another name too, not just the animal carrier?
They're crates.
Crates.
Because you have, well, you have wire crates, you have the carriers that we're talking about that are the plastic.
Or you could say animal carriers or crates.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're airline carriers.
I think this, I think we're getting so specific to putting, uh, our sheriff's department in a position where.
We can't make a judgment.
Yeah, it's hard to make a judgment and then many cases you're gonna have, uh, shelters out there that could be served as a purpose, but they're in violation.
Well, a crate or carrier is very precise, I mean, the ones I see all have the same general shape style. This wires, wire, wires, it's a lot of ventilation.
If, if I may, um, Mr. Jordan, you asked Ms. Whittaker, they had sent a response with proper shelter. And I did find what you had submitted when you submitted the petition, if I can read that. Sure. Proper shelter means provision of and access to shelter that is suitable for the species, age, condition, size, and type of each animal. Provides adequate space for each animal, is safe and protects each animal from injury, rain, sleet, snow, hail, direct sunlight, the adverse effects of heat or cold, physical suffering, and impairment of health. Is properly lighted, is properly cleaned, enables each animal to be clean and dry, except when detrimental to the species. And for dogs and cats, provides a solid surface, resting platform, pad, floor mat, or similar device that is large enough for the animal to lie on in a normal manner and can be maintained in a sanitary manner. Shelters with wire grid or flat floor, flat floors permit the animal's feet to pass through the openings, sag under the animal's weight, and otherwise do not protect the animal's feet and toes from injury or not adequate shelter. Dog shelters can be commercially made or custom built as long as there are three walls, a floor as described above, and a secure roof. Must be accompanied by a separate overhang, structurally sound canopy, A-frame, and/or lean to covering the house to protect its rain, wind, snow, sleet, hail, and/or sun. Plastic carriers and plastic or wood houses alone do not meet the requirements of proper shelter.
And, and, you know, probably seventy percent of what I'm hearing is a judgment call by the sheriff's department at will. And you have more specifics in there, but it's, it's, uh, it's still gonna be left up to the sheriff's department or the terminal whether or not it's sufficient shelter.
But Commissioner Jordan, we're not gonna get that. The dogs on Ramtree Lane, there's still four other dogs out there.
Do they have, do they have, they have shelter, proper shelter?
They have a plastic doghouse and they have a plywood board nailed across them for an A-frame or so to speak, and they're tipped over, so the house is set up like this. The dogs can't get into it, the owner half the time doesn't go out there and prop them back up. That was a judgment call right there, when that dog died, those other four dogs should have been taken from that owner and he should have been charged with a felony charge of animal cruelty.
So you're saying, you don't feel that those doghouses, do they meet what we have in the current ordinance?
Um, they meet the three walls and, and the roof, but they don't protect you. You're, you're not gonna sit in your car with your window rolled down when it's ninety degrees outside. And a dog is not gonna sit in a plastic doghouse or a wood doghouse when it's ninety degrees outside and they have no access to any shade. That guy should have been made to build some type of canopy, A-frame, something other than just sitting those dogs in a plastic house in the back of his property, chained up, using them for breeding and whatever else.
Let's, uh, let's begin by, uh, if, if we can, I would like to, having heard their definition and thanks for reading that, I'd like to add somewhere in that phrase, adequate space, cause that will address the size.
Or species.
Whatever it says, but yeah, whatever the adequate, um, space says. And coming from PETA and, and the petition, it did say three walls. It did say three walls, which will, which will help some of the, uh, some of the situations. And that's, that's what we already had in there and it's part of theirs. Um, gentlemen, uh, Ms. Hoppa, do, everybody else wanna jump in there?
First three walls, Commissioner Owens, we also want to put in order to cover what Steve has. Uh, a housing that is protected completely around them, rather than saying a barrel. Uh, yes sir.
You could just say, uh, two hundred and seventy degrees of coverage. That covers any type of structure as long as you've got that, that area, could be round, any shape you want.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be good, because if you, I was saying if I heard it, mine is like, they're not all the same shape.
So we, I would like to see, let's leave the three walls in there slash two hundred and seventy degrees coverage.
That way it's circle.
And, and bear in mind, we may continue to tweak this from time to time as we bump into issues.
Mr. Bell? That's a long definition.
Sorry.
I'm trying to remember what I heard, but.
Winded, but the, the, the biggest thing is for these dogs that are chained up, that they have to have some kind of overhang. Still, by definition only, the shelter is not adequate. It's, it's not.
So the definition here doesn't use any word of overhang.
So if you're gonna have, and, and this is, this is only going at the irresponsible owners. The responsible owners aren't doing, doing this, so I mean, you're gonna have to educate.
Here's the other thing that really is, is hard, is, uh, Mr. Long has two hundred and seventy degrees coverage in his situation. But John Doe has the same barrel, has sear shavings in it. But he doesn't put, he puts his in the sun. He didn't put his, you know, pin with that canopy on. And it's, even though it's the same shelter, it's not the same protection. That's what is hard to address.
No, you just say you have to have a canopy.
But be protect, it needs to be expressed, be protected from sun, snow, all of the elements.
But we, we have that.
I, I think, you know, to me, if you add the word where it says, constant access to sufficient shelter, three walls, a roof, and a floor that sits above ground, and adequately protects from the weather, it gives the sheriff's department an even greater opportunity to make a judgment decision.
Cause see, right now it says protection away.
Is it protect?
When you use the word adequate in there, he, if he could see the, if the animal's suffering, that means it's not adequate. But if it just says protects, yeah, it does, it does protect to some level or to some degree. But we put the word adequate in there, that's what I was trying to explain earlier. It helps, it helps the authorities say, I'm making a judgment call here, that's not adequate because the animal is in shelter, but it's something, the animal suffered.
I think that's just a shelter by itself and no shade or whatever, but the overhang is not happening.
Well, at that altitude, we need to do it on ram.
But the, the.
You never guessed, I went to school for engineering, but another way you could address this is to come back and say that the shelter provides, uh, you know, thermal benefit. In other words, if there's gotta be a degree drop in the, in the sun. Or if, if in the wintertime, it provides some type of thermal insulation that, you know, prevents freezing. You could put that type of temper, temperature difference on there. Now you're not saying how it has to be built, you just have to do it some way. Whether that's beating trees, flopped off by another building, or they put a physical roof over. But if it provides protection, be it by manmade or by God, and it changes the temperature to keep it safe, then the desired effect is there.
Okay, repeat that, cause watching call that.
Thermal.
Thermal.
Basically thermal protection. So basically in the summertime that is decreasing, you could say it has to provide maybe ten degrees differential. Or you could definitely say that in the summertime that it could not increase. Cause the plastic crates that she's talking about, I guarantee it'll be hotter than the outside temperature.
Oh yeah, that would be like a steam bank.
So that he could.
So Ms. Hoppa, we could say provides adequate thermal protection. And that would address heat and cold.
Now is this with the canopy over the doghouse?
Well, the owners are gonna have to decide what method, to specify a type of method in the ordinance. It's basically a little bit on the, the sheriff's department, they could certainly, uh, determine whether or not it's adequate. Whether it's canvas or plywood or.
Because obviously if you put them out in the sun or in the cold, the doghouse is gonna be, you know, by nature, a dog is not gonna get in the doghouse if it's hot. And if these people, and, and I, and I put no offense to Steve, he's my neighbor and I think very dearly of him. But if these hunters can't afford to do what they need to do, then they need to pick up knitting.
Yep, need to get up in front.
Well, I think a lot of the hunters are responsible.
Well, I disagree, but we're allowed to do that.
But that's, well, the ones I see in my community, I think to be, sometimes it's out of state, it's outside.
At the hunt, I, I have talked, I have spoken my piece to a lot of hunters, cause I've seen it. I've seen it bad too, dog before and helped. Man, be that dog. Yeah, I tell, I don't mind telling somebody, cause I, I love my animals, huh? And that dog is God's creature. And he needs to be taken care of, you know?
Yeah, I agree, and a lot of people swear a lot of money on their dogs, uh, hunting dogs, but they're not gonna mistreat them.
I got.
But anyway, that's a, those differences of opinion, I believe.
So animal, uh, experts here, uh, a doghouse in the winter, let's say when it's twenty degrees and it's sitting outside, uh, what would you need inside to make sure? You know, obviously animals grow a thick, they have, their body adjusts to, to, uh, the wet weather. But what, what would you call adequate for to have inside that house, even if it had three walls and a front, a door?
Would you need adequate bedding for?
What's more type?
Shavings, uh, cedar shavings, pine shavings, and some people do put, uh, bedding hay down for them. But, um, also, um, make sure that the wind is not, like, wind blows in a certain direction. You know, so, and I make sure that the wind's not blowing into my barrels also. By turning my barrels towards certain, certain directions and, um, so.
So, so if the animal patrol officer rode by and just decided to check, uh, the doghouse that was sitting out in the yard and if he didn't see any shavings or whatever in there or, uh.
Then you can ride them up.
He, he, he would have the authority, well, he has the authority to do that, but.
You can find them.
He should.
So, no, there again, we have to handle a lack of, they're gonna make a judgment.
But we, we got to sort of somewhere to bank it down and these animals that are being treated long, store them. And that will, when you start putting that in the newspaper, such, such person going to jail for three charges of, they just let the animals, he's going to jail and he's got four thousand of dollars. And then he'll get word around, hey, I need you something, but not then, cause I don't wanna have the same situation happen.
Well, I'm not really addressing the hunting dogs, it's just the regular domestic dog that.
All dogs.
Yeah, all dogs, sitting down up in their backyard.
And, and, you know, a lot of the points have been brought up tonight about proper shelter and, um, things that we need to make sure that we include. Yeah, as I, I think that we probably need to look at this and rewrite that and also care for our attorney and make sure it is, uh, meets, is enforceable. Uh, a lot of it's not enforceable, it's not, not workable for some reason. And, uh, so I really think that that probably we need to go back to the drawing boards of I think that definition. Uh, but we have, certainly got some good insight, uh, like things that, the thermal protection, the, um, adequate, um, and various things so that we, uh, can make a proper definition. And about animal carriers, to take a look at that. I think the whole issue in the animal ordinance that is somewhat, uh.
Getting a lot of attention.
Getting a lot of attention, is the one at the very back, three sixteen point three, and that is on tethering. Um, you know, it stands for tethering, um, and that, uh.
There is a change in that.
There is a change about one as well. Um, Commissioner Owens, how about you reading that and we'll take a few minutes and see what your response is to that.
All right, three sixteen point three addresses tether. Standards for chain slash tethering a dog. No animal shall be chained outdoors unattended without a chain, comma, cable, or tether designed to be attached to a harness if deemed necessary by the animal control officer. The maximum weight limit for a chain or tether shall not exceed ten percent of the animal's body weight. All tethers, and this is, is a new addition, it's in yellow, all tethers shall be a minimum of ten foot in length and have a swivel at both ends to prevent twisting and tangling.
Any comments, Commissioner?
I guess all owners that, uh, put their, I'm not trying to be facetious, but they, they put their doghouses about five foot from the road. They do not have a.
Ten foot chain.
But it ain't, they're probably gonna, not have an animal too long. Uh, but I mean, this is, you've gotta look at all sides, but when you put things in right, you gotta make sure that we can live by, we can enforce it. And, uh, so.
And this.
If I have a patrol officer live by and someone had a doghouse that's sitting five foot from the road, that's it, they can't do it. And they got a, a five foot, uh, tether on, guess what? He's supposed to light them up.
Another thing that, that we hope to accomplish is, you know, a lot of times when a dog being mistreated gets attention, it's cause somebody made a phone call. But with our ordinance written properly, an officer, animal control officer can ride by there and say, I think I see something that does not meet the scope of our animal control ordinance, gives him the right, he thinks he saw something. And, uh, so that is our, I mean, for example, he sees a dog out there on a short leash, less than ten foot, gives him the authority to go and check on that animal.
So I said something?
Can I say something?
If the animal looks like it's suffering enough-
Can I say something about that tether?
Yes.
Do we, do you have, why do you have to have the tether? Why can't that go away? Because, I'll be honest with you, and I was probably my fault for years in Boontown, I'd come by any time of the day, there'd be a white dog tied to a chain to a little house out in the mud. Twenty-four hours a day for three or four years straight, I never saw that dog not tied to that. He'd come out, I don't know if he got water and stuff, but he only had a certain distance, he was tied, just like that, that was the coolest thing I could ever see. I never saw that dog not in town, never. And, uh, that just, I've seen that a lot of places, so I just don't understand why. If a person has a dog, why would he need to tether it? I mean, people can say, "I don't have the money for a house and a fence," but if they're gonna have a dog, they need to keep the dog right, okay? Uh, tethering a dog is- is the coolest thing I could think of. You know, I mean, once in a while you might have to do it for a little while, a few minutes or something, but if- if you have a tether law, like you're saying, with the proper harness and the link, there's no way you can enforce that. People, you'll go by and you'll say, "That dog's been on there for, you've never let that dog off," and the owner's not gonna have it, he's gonna be within his rights. If it's, if it's a tether law and he's following it with a harness and the link, he can keep that dog on there for the rest of his life. Um, I just don't see, uh, I just can't see having a dog on a chain or, you know, a rope, uh, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, I- I know when you, even if you live in- in this area here, you know, where you have the roads and all, you still have to, you just can't, you can't do it, it's not right. You need a fence or something to put that dog on. And it's just cool, and that's all I gotta say.
Well, we've got people like Roundtree Lane, he had five dogs chained up. Five, four still chained up. He's one of hundreds out here that have that many dogs chained up. Why? So why are we gonna continue to be inhumane and allow folks to chain and tether their dogs when folks all around us are getting it and stopping it? They are banning chains, they are banning tethering, you cannot do it.
And I'll tell you something, I worked for Peggy Johnson for ten years, I raised German Shepherds, I have raised German Shepherds for thirty years. I have been in behavioral health, it is a well fact, tethering dogs become aggressive.
It's true.
That is a fact, it is because they are chained up, okay? That is a fact. They are- they are, they get upset, they are, they- they have feelings, you know, they, it- it makes them aggressive, um, it- it just, there's just, it just, it's not right, it's just not right.
They do not live their life expectancy, because the folks out here in the county that have chained up dogs, nine times out of ten, none of them have had medical care. The Roundtree Lane dogs, none of them have rabies shots. So if one of those dogs broke loose, bit someone and ran off, that person's gonna have a series of rabies shots done. Um, they do not get any kind of medical care, they- they very rarely, um, get baths, no flea prevention, no tick prevention, no heartworm prevention, they are just an ornament out in the yard. They're lucky, they get food thrown to them, I can't tell you how many calls I get, go to houses, they've got them chained up, and they've gotten garbage down there on the ground if they're feeding them. These are the people I do not want to protect, these are the people that I want them to be held accountable and responsible for their inhumane treatment of their animals.
I understand.
Yeah.
One of the things that we have to mind is that, you know, we want to write this ordinance so that we can protect, uh, domestic animals, but that's why, but we have to also recognize that owners, uh, have a responsibility to, uh, not put the public in danger. And many times some of these animals, if you're not, they would cause a lot of damage.
Well, if they're that- that aggressive, then they, then something needs to be done with them. Sir, you cannot sit there and keep saying that it's okay, but, 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 to keep them chained, okay? It is not right, it's not right.
We've got it, we've got it.
We have to, we have to write the ordinance in a way that it can be enforced.
Okay, that time you need to go home.
Let's see, civil, keep it placed, lower the tone. As we discussed, this is, we want to have civility in here.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay, so let's everybody, and there are differences of opinion, so-
But, but don't say it's illegal to- to- or you have to legally chain them, that- others counties are doing it, other states are doing it.
Uh, there are some that are doing it, and there are some that do not do it.
And the ones that do not do it, that I do, or they thank you, with Austin, please tell me.
Uh, we have the gentleman in the back.
Um, I am not a dog owner, but when you're talking about not chaining up some dog, any of us that's lived in this county for at least five years prior to now, remember going past, um, going on the gate towards, um, Central Heights, uh, Milkville? You remember the dog that were running in the middle of the street and would run and turn around?
Definitely.
I don't know what it was, but it would- it would run in the middle of the street, turn around, ask anybody, and I don't know anybody that had to hit brakes. So to not chain that dog, you are hearing to cause an accident some kind of way, so-
Then you have a password.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, you dress up.
I'm going to go on the one.
Or you have to dress up.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm just, you know, that was just my, you know, so I understand that- that tethering or chaining to an extent.
Yes, sir.
I- I think there is a time and place to tether, uh, and, but it's gotta be supervised. Uh, if you've got, you know, possibly somebody that does have a fenced yard, and they wanna let the dog out to go to the bathroom, they're sitting at a house and they can watch them, that's a great thing. But the lead tethered out, one thing that's very dangerous, which I'm surprised hasn't been mentioned here, is when you put, when you figure out what that leash is, you have to be very careful, since there's a tree out there. Some dogs like to go in circles and not to go in one direction, they wrap themselves up. Now, you've got on there a harness, which is great, that prevents the dog from choking, however, the dog gets wrapped up, now the water and the food's over here, and they can't get to it, and for eight hours, they're not in a shelter, and they're out there in the heat. So I think unsupervised, uh, tethering is something we have to be very concerned about if you're gonna have a tethering law.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I don't think, if you have tethering, you're not gonna be able to supervise it very adequately. I just, if you have a dog that has to be tethered, then the dog is, is pretty aggressive or something like that? I mean, you know, you have to have a fence or something to put the dog in. You just can't tie the dog up 'cause he won't stay in the yard, he takes off and runs to the road. If you have a dog like that, he's got a problem, he needs to be trained, he needs to put in a fence. If he can't, that's the only thing you can do, if you tie him up, that's cruel, and yes, I know dogs run and off, run out on the road and all that, but if they keep doing it, then the owner needs to take and get a fence and put the dog in it, you can't just tie it up. But it just, it's just not, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me, I don't know how.
Okay, um, Commissioner Owens.
Yes, yes, we, on the, um, you know, I may comment earlier about making a decision tonight, and vote tonight, uh, with the changes and what we're hearing, we're not gonna be able to make a decision. Uh, for example, on- on the proper shelter, we're gonna have to run this by our attorney, our attorney's gonna have to check in North Carolina, uh, general statutes, make sure our wording and verbiage is not in violation of any state or county statute. So that's gonna require us not to be able to make a decision, but clearly, um, we- we need to think a little bit more about tethering, um, so I will make a motion that, um, uh, we table any decision tonight on the animal ordinance and present, uh, have the county manager present, uh, this verbiage to our attorney to look over, and we have another hearing, so we can anywhere, before we read it. Uh, and, um, as soon as possible, set up another hearing, and I make that formal motion.
Okay, motion's been made to table the animal ordinance until we, some thorough research is done, or run it by our attorney, or just, what about, what the wording, wording that it's currently is like? Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam-
Motion is made a second, uh, to table this until a later date. Any discussion?
I would like to bring forward to, uh, Commissioner Owens and- and my fellow colleagues here to look at, uh, two oh one point one one on the keeper.
To, to repeat the number three.
Two oh one point one one, two, two oh one point eleven. And second by, uh, oil or not, uh, dogs around us kept on their property, divided substance for three days versus ten days.
How many days?
Three, three days.
Three days? Consider that.
And then strike reporting after first reporting.
And, uh, so, so we're in the discussion part before we go, um, don't really have any discussion, but I did want to say to the public, we appreciate all of the comments, every comment that we hear, we're all good animal owners up here. All these folks out there are good animal owners. You know, earlier somebody said something about child rearing, or parenting, are they doing good parenting, are they doing bad parenting? It's the same situation here, it's the same scenario. Work with us, we're gonna have, it'll probably be January, there's a timeframe, you can't have a hearing overnight, you have to put the public side. Um, so it'll be January, um, writing to all the commissioners, specifically about tethering, because that's just gonna be the- the next little, little thing, or- or anything related to this. And we'll read it, we'll read it, and we may respond, um, we may wait till a hearing to respond, uh, or we may wait till, you know, some other deliberation opportunity. But we will read it, we will respond to it. Keep in mind that we're a body of five people. And sometimes you ask us a question that, if, when we're responding to it, we have to respond as a body of five, not as individuals. And, but again, I speak for everybody up here, we thank you for your concern for us.
Yes, and, uh, we will, um, go back to the drawing boards and look at those couple areas, see what we can do and run it by our attorney.
I'll call for a vote, thank you.
Okay, motion in front, I mean, is to table the, uh, animal, uh, control ordinance until a future date. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And that guy will comment, um, if, to give us your expertise on this issue, and we'll continue to work, and try to make it the best ordinance we can do. And this town will move on to, um, another ordinance, and this one is on smoking and use of other tobacco and vapor products and buildings owned by, at least to Gaze County, and public transportation vehicles owned by, or at least to Gaze County. Uh, we've had a force tobacco ordinance in county in a few years, but tobacco has changed. Uh, now we have vapor products and all types of, um, such as cigars and cigarettes. Uh, we have a chance, you have a chance to go with this, the changes are in red, those things that have been, you know, moving from the ordinance that have been struck through, uh, you can see in this, or-
Small person. Madam Chair, we have had it for a few days, and, um, county manager-
This is the same ordinance that was presented to you in July.
In July.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm agreed with the fellow commissioners with what I saw.
Well, I'm in agreement with, uh, taking a couple of corrections, I'd like to see they, uh, administrate it.
You want the page?
I guess it's first page, second, page is outnumbered, opportunity.
Is it in the blue, I forget.
It's in red.
Okay.
Um, the first, it's the third paragraph, it's in red, and the last sentence, it says, "In local vehicles, be open, be open."
That's a typo.
Okay. On the last page, where it has the effective date, the first word at the top, well, it's on previous page, it says, "Following oral or written notice by the person in charge of the area to describe this section two, or hears or heard that they need to be-"
That's a need.
That's a need, it's got to be that.
Can all the font will also be adjusted, will that will still be a statement?
Again, I have a question, I mean, I'm not opposed against it, it says, "A citation" of that same paragraph, "The citation may be issued by a sworn law enforcement officer. Conviction of an infraction under this section and no consequence other than payment of a penalty and no court cost may be assessed." What happened to some of that paper?
Does this come straight from the general statute?
Yeah, they don't, I mean, you cite, no, they don't even pay it, nothing coming back.
It's in there, it is.
But it's just a question, I'm not gonna call up and prove-
Check on that, 'cause I, when I read that, I thought like that, I followed it.
Yeah, and how you, yeah, you assess it by, but you have no way of collecting it.
But wouldn't it deal with that personnel court?
Well, if it's a general-
Much like the personnel court, because it supplies other- Okay, this is, it's not just hanging for you.
Well, it's- it's a general statute, and if you're gonna collect, it's like, a law enforcement officer helping you, right, is going to, uh, cite, offer someone a citation, it's, uh, gonna be recorded in the clerk's office up here. If it's not paid, then the clerk of court will tell them, "You're gonna come stand before the judge," isn't that right?
It could be called into court for adjudication if that infraction is, uh, is so just, and that's what we look at.
And one twenty-three, please, several ways for enforcement of ordinances. Um, it says, "A county may provide fines and penalties for violation of its ordinances and may secure injunctions and abatement orders to further ensure compliance with ordinance as provided by this section." And then it goes on, "If the, unless the commissioners have provided otherwise, a violation, violation of the county ordinance is a misdemeanor or infraction as provided by general statute fourteen four. An ordinance may provide by express statement that the maximum fine, term of imprisonment or infraction penalty could be imposed for a violation in some amount of money, some amount of money, or number of days less than the maximum imposed by general statute fourteen dash four." And I can continue reading, but it's, it has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, well, the last one talks about public air force, so.
We don't have more, but, um, okay, um, just check and see, that, that is saying, okay, everyone has a chance, will it go over it? Uh, I'll enter in a motion.
Madam Chair, um, I move that we enact this ordinance before us with the corrections stated by, uh, Commissioner Jordan.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the ordinance prohibiting smoking and use of other types of vapor products. Uh, I've, motion's been made, you all have a second?
Second is motion.
Motion to the proper, second, any further discussion? Hearing, uh, we did not need a public hearing on this because it was a, um, it was a violation statute. Okay, I'll let equal, any comments? Hearing, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so that is passed, five zero. Okay, moving on, to do business, tax refund. Mrs. Lane, I believe you're here, I believe the Brooksons are here.
Yes, good evening, consider body, uh, Mr. Brooks, happy to meet you. Yeah, the synopsis of events that went on, uh, all the literature, the tax records, if you will, that, you know, originated from a joint property owner, and the cause of you questioning the tax, but in essence, this event, as we know, you know, forty point seven seven acres was never done. So we had a incorrect assessment for the acreage, um, it should've been point two five acres, if you will, a fourth of an acre, and we were charging one point oh one a- charging one point oh one acres. This was actually originated from a split from two thousand and ten, the parcel originated, if you will, and was, you know, that was, we have a background behind it. But the conveyance was never done, the taxpayer, I talked with in Arizona, had, had thought and such, of course, the plat was done to imply that that was the intent, however, the D never was, was filed, if you, and we know the plat does not do a plan in another cell. So, maybe all that literature behind it. And oddly enough, before the meeting, I was, you know, we had to render in all the five years of the refund amount, with that couple of refunds presented to the board of course, and that's been our standard. And keep in mind, that's the maximum of five. Now, pursuant to general statute, I'm going to find three eighty-one, maximum of five, however the board can determine any amount, and I think probably moving forward, you know, into the new year, if the board wanted to develop a standard on refunds, three, four, five years, that's something certainly we can address, but I did provide that refund synopsis for the five years, the, the acreage assessment was incorrect, so I just wanted to bring that up. I think we've had two occasions previously, for the board, we did the five-year range maximum, but I do, I do want to share that, that there is some concession that the board, county commissioners can develop their own threshold timeframe. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, as you see, at this point, yes, you have a question?
Yes. The incorrect designation of this property, who's charging for one point one ten acre versus one, two, five, whatever it's supposed to be, how are we gonna recruit the land that we charged him for, but the actual owners of that land, are we just, we gotta go back and...
They, they've already paid as well, that's, that's the thing, Commissioner Jordan, that tax bill, as I provided to the three siblings, the point seven seven, that acreage was already assessed and built, if you will, in all these consecutive years since two thousand and ten, so that, that tax bill is in fact, I mean, it's in...
That tax bill was correct.
It was, and we, we built them, and oddly enough, we, we built for the total acreage that it would've been had that conveyance come through with the parcel. That was the thing, we've kind of built, built twice, and, you know, so that's already really not an issue, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, I everybody have a chance for review, thank you for your documentation, it was very thorough, it went step by step, it's very easy to follow, and entertain a motion concerning this, you see the amount of refund, nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-five cent. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we grant the refund stipulated here by our tax office, nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-five cent. Second.
Okay, motion's been made promptly, second, any additional questions or comments? Okay, ready for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, well, I don't know, who's gonna give the money, the man or the wife?
I'm only concerned about who, just me.
And listen, and that's, you know, they can't go by the plats, it has to be by the D, the, the, I'm sorry for, it's just...
Well, if I can help, the county, there was something going on in the county at that time, they, they only allowed us to survey that particular, Mr. Fulton, I think was doing a survey, they, they would only allow us, because we had to, I had to come back and do some kind of assessment, and they would only allow me to buy or survey that point two five, some kind of, but we bought before they.
We got a result.
Yeah, so yours, she can go for the flat variety shopping. Motion ready to take now.
Thank y'all so much.
Okay, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have some budget requests.
Yes, the first one is an additional one thousand dollars, and it is for some additional SARS training for the emergency management department.
Okay, and this is just transferred?
No, no, that's new grant money.
New grant money, okay.
You wanna do it both together?
Yes, let's do it both together, okay?
And the second one is a homeland security grant that we have received in Gates County, it will be the owner and the keeper of a, what they are calling a crime mover, which would be a truck, and it would be used in this area for any sort of homeland security issue, or during any emergencies, as part of our grant and coordination with other counties. We do have to pay for the insurance on this truck, but that, and that is not included in the sixty-five thousand dollars.
And what kind of truck is it, a crime mover, in fact?
It's a crime mover, it's an F three fifty, if I remember correctly.
And how much is the insurance going to be?
Uh, we've received that, and I did not bring that, so.
It must've, we had it in his budget.
Yes, we've already discussed that.
Okay, so it's already covered in the budget?
We've already discussed that.
Okay, so these are two budget requests made from emergency, emergency management, one moving, I mean, one is the homeland security grant, and the other one is a budget for L E P C tier two non-competitive grant.
And the insurance is under five hundred dollars, okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the budget request on the 12th.
Okay, a motion's been made, you don't have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion made, a second to approve amendments twelve and thirteen, in this additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, A B C board appointment.
We did not have that application, and that is Mr. Taylor, Ronald Taylor, he, the last he had just forgotten to put it in the mail to us, so he mailed it today, but he has conveyed to me in several face-to-face conversations that he still wants to serve, and Mr., my name's not blank, I apologize, no, not Mr. Fitton, the store manager has called and asked, has he been appointed, so he is also wanting him to serve. So, we should receive his actual application tomorrow or Wednesday in the mail. And Mr. Taylor currently serves on A B C board and on planning board.
I move that Ronald Taylor be appointed to the A B C board.
Reappointed.
Reappointed to the A B C board, having his received application. I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made, a second to reappoint Ronald Taylor to the A B C board upon delivery of his application, any discussion, I mean, do I, yeah, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, votes five zero. Okay, the appointment of a review officer, to, by signing of plats and things, and this is asking that we appoint Lisa Cherry, the county planner, to be our review officer in pursuant to North Carolina general statute four seven dash three, three, zero, point two.
So, move, second.
Okay, motion's been made, a second, any discussion?
We'll swing in when you think like that, isn't it?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, all those in favor, appoint Lisa Cherry as our review officer, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Madam Chair, if anyone has not met our planning director, she sits by here.
Yes, and we're pleased, and we just, we're pleased to have her. Okay, court resolution supporting the future of Interstate Highway eighty-seven, that of course is Highway seventeen, as we currently, that is currently designated seventeen, and future Interstate Highway seventeen. Passmatan County has asked us to, to support this resolution. I believe it's, Currituck County kinda wanted to change the route of the future of Highway eighty-seven to go through Currituck more so than through the way it goes through Camden and Passmatan up to Chesapeake, Virginia. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I look at this, and I think what they have, what Passmatan County has proposed is a better option, it's gonna be less costly, and to me, it would be the most efficient in that way.
And there's four lanes that already have been built through Passmatan to Camden, so up to the Virginia border.
And I would propose going ahead and supporting the resolution, just changing where Passmatan County is to Gates County, and my life would work.
The indication is from us and the dates. Are you prepared to make that as a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the Gates County Board of Commissioners submit a resolution in support of, of U.S. Highway seventeen being designated as Interstate eighty-seven as originally proposed, instead of using the segment ten A, which would grab it on the Camden area, and it was swung to the current area.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, any further discussion?
Is, is there, has been a topic also at R T I, another...
You mean, the R P O meeting? No, this was not mentioned at the R P O meeting, the Currituck discussion or recommendation was not discussed, it came out in, I believe it was the daily advance, two days after the R P O meeting.
Don't, don't you think that was kind of suspicious? Okay, all those in favor of passing this resolution in support of the future Interstate Highway eighty-seven going along the current U.S. Highway seventeen as authorized, originally authorized by Congress, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none, so that passes five zero as well. Okay, we're going to citizens' comments.
Okay.
Okay, commissioners' comments, starting at the end of table, Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly appreciate the input from our citizens tonight, and the folks that have been interested in, in our ordinances from the very beginning. We would like to resolve it, certainly, as you see from my colleagues here, however, there are always things that need to be tweaked, it's just part of bureaucracy, so please bear with us on that. Other than that, we, we are here to serve, we appreciate your calls, we appreciate the heads up, and I'd like to apologize to Madam Chair, too, about what Ms. Webb told, told us about curfew, she did discuss that with me, and I thought I had mentioned it at our last meeting, or the meeting before, when I mentioned that she would be coming forth, or would be calling to be on the agenda, so send my apologies for not bringing that forward. Other than that, appreciate it.
Appreciate everybody being here tonight, and staying civil with your discussions, for the most part, and just appreciate everybody's interest in the county, and it's always a good thing to see people that are concerned, and Mr. Jordan, I still have one to say to you.
He's out there, he's right.
I too, thank everyone for coming in, all the input, to try to help us to do what we've been elected to do, we recognize we do work with the citizens, we make it a decision that's gonna be correct for all of our citizens, not just a few, but for all, and thank you for staying, I don't see any mind, district, but anyway, I know that there is support, and have a, have a thanks to it, good thanks to it.
My constituents, your constituents and mine, they're, they're already setting their own curfew, and being citizens, that's why they're not here. I would like to ask this gentleman out here, if he will, state his name.
Montgomery Clemmons.
Montgomery Clemmons.
One ninety-nine Saunders Road.
Okay, and the lady with you?
That's my wife, Janet.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your, my hand, good.
And absolutely, I appreciate you being here and taking forth the winning number for us, so.
Jack, you do have one, at least a little bit.
Miss Cherry, okay.
We do have her dog.
Okay. Thank you, citizens, for being here tonight, and even gave Chairman Hopford, Hopford, you is a guy.
Oh, yes.
So, but we have these spirited comments, all it tells us is that we know that you're passionate about whatever you're speaking about, and we, we pride ourselves and have good debates, and, and have the ability, so we thank everyone for participating. Again, I will comment, if you email us, we will take your email into consideration, share with the other commissioners, and, and that's the way we're gonna get things done, the way the citizens live life within certain parameters, because there are a lot of citizens, and they differ in their opinions, and there are people who email us and call us, stop us down the street, that never come to these meetings, or see us in church, and they never come to these meetings, but they tell us what they think, too. Just remember that we hear those comments as well. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming.
Yes, thank you for coming as well, none of my constituents from Hopford was there, but we are all law-abiding citizens, and we, we don't violate curfews, but anyway, no, thank y'all for coming, and, you know, there's a lot of opinions about these issues, it's not always as cut and dry as, as it appears to be sometimes, and what is written, you think it means one thing, and then someone brings it up, that looks at it a different way, you thought, you had thought, you had, you didn't think about it that way. So, it is always good to have a spirited debate, and bring up different ideas and viewpoints, and we do appreciate that. And as we enter this week of Thanksgiving, we certainly have a lot to be blessed for, we live in a country where we can debate issues, and that the government is there to listen to the people, we are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, and we should always remember that. Worst thing we can do is be apathetic, we need to be involved, we will have better government if we all get involved, and stay our opinions, and, and we can reach consensus. And so, I'd like for you all to have a good evening, don't eat too much over the next few days, and we will see you back December fourth, because our next meeting is on Monday, but that's House of General Statute, the first meeting of the year of the commissioners has, in December, has to be on the first Monday.
And it's at the extension office, because the court is scheduled for that day as well.
Okay, so we'll be at County Extension, which is the two buildings over, I mean, separate building over. Okay, thank you, and we'll take, we're going to enter into closed session in pursuit of North Carolina general statute one four three dash three one eight, allowing to deal with personnel issues. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion's been made, a second to enter into closed session, all those in favor say aye. Okay, while we're clearing the courtroom, we will take a few minutes break. Okay, do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So, move, second.
Motion's been made, promptly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will adjourn the meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move, second.
Do I have a motion's been made, promptly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, a little delayed. Okay, at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting to December the fourth, and this is on Monday, gentlemen, at ten o'clock, at County Extension. Okay, I hope y'all all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.